We'll call the January 3rd City Council Meeting to order. We have presentations of colors with the invocation, pledge, and fact of the day by Commissioner Smith. Presentation of colors?
Our Father God, we come humbly to this, we know how. To say thank you, God, for the blessing that was stored upon us. Thank you, Heavenly Father, for allowing us to see a brand-new year. We thank you, God, for your continued to empower us to be servants of this city. We ask the Lord that all that we shall say and do be pleasing and acceptable in your sight. This we pray in thy son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day. On January 3rd, 2004, the Mars Exploration Rover Spirit lands on the red planet. Twenty-one days later, its twin Opportunity also arrives safely. In one of the longest and most successful missions in NASA history, Spirit was surveying Martin geography for the next seven years while Opportunity remained active until June of 2018. Fact of the day.
Thank you. All right. Joe?
Good afternoon, everybody. Joe Patton, Director of HR. Today, we celebrate service pins, our service of our employees. I don't believe anyone showed up for the... No one RSVP'd to be here for whatever reason. So I'm just making sure nobody's in the audience for... To show... Okay. So what I'd like to do is read their names, the department, and the number of years that they've spent with the city. So we'll start with William Ayala, Fire Department, suppression for five years. Jeremiah S. Williams, Fire Department, suppression, five years. Antonio Batista, Fire Department, Emergency Medical Services, 10 years. Mandy Mathis, Fire Department, Emergency Medical Services, 10 years. Dylan Spencer, Fire Department, Emergency Medical Services, 10 years. Jason Watson, Fire Department, Emergency Medical Services, 15 years. Dwight Ashton, Fire Department, Emergency Medical Services, 20 years. William Bryant, Police Department, Communications Dispatch, 15 years. And Ruben Torres, Fire Department, Field Services, service 15 years. Oh, I'm sorry. Police Department. Too many Fire Department. So... So please give them a round of applause for their services. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Jackie. Thanks for your help. All right. Council meeting minutes from December 6th. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez.
Second.
Taken by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Popka's Vision Zero Plan. Pam Richmond, come on up.
Good afternoon. I wanted to start off subject and tell you, in case you hadn't noticed, we started work on the intersection of Arrow Parkway and 441. We had hoped to be finished by the end of March, but we're having some utility issues. So maybe a little later, maybe April or May. I'm sorry. And so today, I'm going to talk about Vision Zero. And I'm going to start with... Oh, sorry.
Pam, raise your mic just a little bit. Need to speak louder.
Is that better? So I'm going to start with the goal and what the goal of Vision Zero is. And I'm a little passionate about this because I've been here seven years now. And we've had quite a few fatalities, pedestrian, bicycle, and a few auto-related. So it's... I take it a little personally, but... So if I tend to ramble, somebody give me the, you know, get moving. So I have a script. I'm going to stick to it. So Metro Plan Orlando is using USDOT Safe Streets for All grant money to fund a safety action plan for each of the municipalities within its service area. Our plan will detail specific strategies and projects that will eliminate fatal and severe injury crashes for roadways in Apopka. We will ensure that it addresses the issues we are dealing with in the city and not the general concerns of roadway safety. Most of our pedestrian and bicycle fatalities, for example, occur on state roads and are not the fault of the driver of a vehicle, but are caused by the pedestrian or cyclist's action. The plan development and elements include a Vision Zero resolution, public involvement, and the identification of projects and strategies. So now to what is Vision Zero? Vision Zero is an ideology that has been embraced by the USDOT, FDOT, Metropolitan Planning Organizations, and local governments that envision a safe and connected transportation network where people, regardless of age, race, ability, and chosen mode of transportation, can travel safely. I'm going to just run through some of these pretty quick. The primary tenet of Vision Zero is that... Sorry. Is that all traffic deaths are preventable by changing the traditional approach to what is called the Safe System Approach. The Safe System Approach is a data-driven holistic and equitable method to roadway safety. It's based on an ethical position where it can never be acceptable that people are seriously injured or killed on the roadway network. So we have a scope with a consultant that's been furnished to us by Metro Plan Orlando, and these are the key tasks. There are seven primary tasks that will be followed to develop the city's plan. This is a draft schedule. We kicked off the project not on... Not in November, but on December 11th. And we're a little bit behind schedule, but we will start our public engagement probably after... Later this month. We will be targeting local events where we can do pop-up public involvement. We expect to have a plan drafted in late spring.
Pam, can I just... One question before you...
Yes, Pam.
You said you kicked it off in December?
December 11th. With just... We have a...
What did you do on December 11th?
We had the first meeting of the working group, which is comprised of city staff, some of our partners, and a member of the public. And all we did was go over exactly what I'm doing with you right now, what they signed up for to be part of our working group.
Who is the member of the... Of the public?
Eric Mock. He helped with the Transportation... The Act of Transportation Network. And so he, being a planning commissioner too, he brings a little something extra. We have someone from Orange County on the committee, someone from Bike Walk Central Florida, planning staff, someone from public services. So we have... Oh, and Sergeant Harmon from PD.
Where did you have this meeting? On December 11th?
In the Edward Bass Conference Room. It was not a meeting that was like a public meeting. It was a... Just a kickoff meeting for the working group, who's going to be doing the guiding part of this and part of the public involvement with the consultant.
Okay. All right. It's just I just... I didn't know about it.
Right. That's why I'm here today, before we started any public involvement, before anything's out there, so that y'all can know about this project that's been funded by Metro Plan and how we're going to go about doing it.
Okay.
So I emailed you a copy this morning of this presentation. So you could see, I went through it kind of fast. Along with a link to an interactive map that gives details on every fatality related to the... To transportation in the Metro Plan region for 2018 to 2022. But for more details on Vision Zero Central Florida, there's a website. It's visionzero CFL.gov. And it will take you through the philosophy and the process that includes the regional vision. When we finish the plan, we'll be set up to get grants and get on a prioritized list at Metro Plan for DOT and federal dollars to do some of our safety improvements. We're already doing... We've already started this even before Vision Zero. We put medians out on 441. To... Because we have a pedestrian safety issue out there. We're putting up streetlights every place that we can get them with, you know, with our resources. And that's kind of the beginning. As soon as our public involvement events are set, I will send you an email telling you where and when we're going to be there. And I'll publicly notice those so that council members may attend. Oh, sorry.
Wow. That was quick for Pam.
Uh-uh.
Is that it?
That's it.
So any questions on Pam? I mean, we had a big discussion at Metro Plan last month. And, you know, I thought it was interesting. Mayor Demings, you know, said, you know, we talked about, obviously, you want to get to zero. But as he stated, we hadn't been below 100 in a long, 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 long time. He said, "So our goal is to make incremental changes to drive it towards zero." But, you know, from an Orange County or that was a Metro Plan perspective. But, you know... And we've made some great steps along with DOT to, you know, the 441 corridor is our... Probably has been our worst, you know...
It still is.
Area. And so we've... With the help from DOT, that should make a huge difference. And hopefully, with all the streetlights now, we... If we're not all LED, we're within a half a dozen or something. So we...
We're getting there.
Which obviously helps. There's obviously now places where we need to go ban and spot, put in additional LED lights. But, you know, those are easy things for us to get done. It's, you know, getting down into the nitty-gritty of, you know, speeds and, you know, how we address traffic is going to be the hard part. But anyway, any other questions for Pam?
If you can just provide me with a list of who's on this board?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I'll email that to you.
Yeah.
It's not a board. It's just a...
Is it an advisory board? What is it?
I would call it like more of a guiding board because this consultant that's coming in doesn't really know anything about us. And it's our job to tell them what we see here in the city and where those areas are and to really ground-truth the data that they've provided. I've already looked at some of the stuff that they've provided. And to others' way of thinking, mostly pedestrian and bicycle fatalities are caused by aggressive driving, speeders, distracted drivers, and impaired drivers. But if you look at the data points for the pedestrian bicycle fatalities in the city, almost exclusively, they were the fault of the pedestrian. And I use fault...
I'm sorry. Say that again?
The fault of the pedestrian or the cyclist because they do unpredictable things. They're intoxicated. They're distracted. They're not crossing at crosswalks. They're crossing in the dark. You know, you're driving down the road and you're... You drive a larger car. They can see you coming, but if it's really dark, you can't see them. So I didn't want our plan to be focused around other things that really aren't happening here in the city. It's not because we're speeding and running over people or we're so distracted that we are not paying attention to the road or these other two of these big four things. It's we have to adapt to the problem in a different way. And so our job is to ensure that the strategies and projects that we come up with through this study are... They actually address our needs, not just some general ideas about what creates safety for all modes of transportation.
When you say "study," who is doing the study?
The study is being done by Kittleson. They are a very well-known and very high-quality consultant that Metro... They are under contract with Metro Plan Orlando, and they were assigned to do ours. They're doing some others in the area, too.
So they will be in the city of Apopka?
Yes.
Okay.
They'll be... When we do our public involvement events, they will pretty much be taking the lead on that, getting everything set up. And of course, we'll be there, too.
Don't we have another program that we actually help fund, you know, with crosswalks and pedestrians?
That's Best Foot Forward. Yeah, that's Best Foot Forward. We pay them a fee every year. And they go around and they identify. We work with them. You might have... You've been to some.
Yeah.
Where we stand on the side of the road and watch Sergeant Harmon take his life in his hands and cross the street.
It's mostly done by the schools. Yep. Where the schools are.
We've... Yeah, we've done some by schools, but... Yeah, we did that one, I think you were there, out on Vota.
Okay.
By the... Where the trail crosses Vota. Trying to think of where else.
We did one right here.
Yeah.
We did one here. We did one recently. We did one up on Welch and Rock Springs Road. That was the one that you recommended.
Yeah. Okay.
And we collected some good data. So we've, you know, we've got that safety thing on, too. They're actually on our committee to help because they know a lot about the city and what some of our more troublesome spots are. So we're tapping into their knowledge.
Okay. If you could just keep us kind of...
I'm happy to do that.
Yeah. Inform, whether it's through email, to let us know how it's progressing. What are you doing? Just so I can have...
Of course.
Some knowledge of what's going on.
Of course. No problem.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Becker? Ms. Smith?
Good.
Ms. Nesta?
Couple quick questions.
Sure.
I... You did send this. It was at noon. So I didn't get enough time to review it. I was trying to get it quick. But just a couple... And we did discuss this, too. The dates for the meetings, to echo Commissioner Velasquez, if we can just get that in advance.
Yeah.
Because as much as it's great for us to be there, we really want the public to be there to hear their voices. What are their concerns? I was at the New Year's Eve party here on 5th, and somebody had said, you know, it'd be great if we had a crosswalk over 441 to get back to our houses on the north side there of 441. And not that that may not happen, but it is good to hear direction from the public that will be using these day in and day out. So it helps us be able to market those dates as well so that we have as much feedback as possible. So I think that's really important, if we can get those dates as early as possible. Do you have an expected amount of funds we should be receiving? Or is it based on the plan that we'll create?
The way that's going to work is there will be two sources of funding. One of them is we'll get... Our projects will be incorporated into Metro Plan's big plan. Then that all gets prioritized and wherever we fall on the list. Anything that we feel strongly about doing, we're probably going to look for grants. And Metro Plan will help us with that, too. And they're usually competitive grants. So we'll just start applying.
Okay.
I don't know. Because I don't know what the projects are going to be.
Look like yet.
I know... I'm hoping that we find some places to do crosswalks that are enhanced, you know, with the different kinds of lights and pavement and... Because there are a couple places in the city where that's appropriate. Bolster up some of the other crosswalks. I know that people that are engaged in this have an affection for lowering the speed limit. But we have to do that cautiously because you can lower the speed limit to 20 miles an hour, but if you don't have enforcement or reason to do it, and it's posted at 45 right now, and people can drive 45, they're still going to do that. So this is supposed to be an alternative to just saying, "Well, we just should lower the speed limit because if you get hit at a lower rate of speed, you have a higher chance of survival."
Okay. I understand. Yeah, however we can support this, I think this is a great... We've talked about this a lot. I like the Bike Walk Central Florida, everything they... All that the Best Foot Forward program does as well. So whatever we can do to support it, I'm all about it. And again, just keep us updated as much as possible. We will be able to push those dates and be there as well to get a lot of attendance.
The consultant got a little bit behind of... Behind schedule, getting their scope and so forth approved through Metro Plan and through us. And so really, if things had happened better, we would have had that initial meeting in November, and I would have been here sooner, but it didn't turn out that way.
No problem. Moving forward, let's just... As many people we can get there, it's better for everybody. So thank you.
Thanks, Pam. Appreciate it. All right. Public comment. Susan?
I just got this one. Sylvester Hall.
Good afternoon again. I start the New Year's off with a reminder from last year. In the city of Apopka, in the state of Florida, and in our country, too many good people are sitting by watching bad things happen and just sit inside, not saying anything or doing anything. It's time for us to stand up and say no more. It's troubling when I say "good people" because nice people, I expect that from nice people. Because nice people, they go along to get along. But good people... Good people are supposed to stand up and say, "No, that's not right. No, that's not fair. No, that's corruption. No, that's illegal." So if you're in this room today, I'm challenging you. I'm challenging your moral conscience. When you see something that's not right, stand up. You are a leader to somebody, and it matters to somebody. When we normalize the abnormal, we desensitize the truth. What does that mean? When we stand up every city council meeting and we give a pledge allegiance to the flag with liberty and justice for all. With liberty and justice for all. And it goes back to the first statement. We know that's not true. But that's what happened when you normalized the abnormal for so long, it don't matter. And you stand up before the flag and you say it. With proud... With such dignity and pride. I served for 20 years, and I would have laid down my life so I can speak this way about it. It's time for us to change. So if you're in this room, I challenge you. Make that change. To all elected officials, first responders, these things should matter to you. Principles should matter. Integrity matters. Honesty matters. Accountability matters. Responsibility matters. Morals matter. Ethics matters. Character matters. Procedures matters. Leadership matters. And laws matters. These things matters. And if we govern ourselves accordingly, all the issues that we have in society will slowly disappear almost overnight. These are not something that we guess would happen. It will happen. If we govern ourselves accordingly, our children and our grandchildren will not have to sit through what we're going through today. And for me, that's what it's all about. So I'm making you a promise. If God's will, I will be here at every city council meeting to hold you accountable. And I say to everybody sitting up there on that panel, you are selected to serve the people, not your own interest, not your special interest. You are selected to serve the people. And I will hold you accountable every day until the good Lord calls me home to make sure you do that. And if you're not up to the test, please find another... Whatever you want to call it, to take part in.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, Mayor. Happy New Year, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Dennis New?
Dennis New, 105 West Magnolia Street, Apopka, Florida. Good afternoon, Commissioners and Mayor. I was going to come here today because I had a stack of stuff I wanted to cover about Camp Weewaw. I've missed a few meetings because of my health. But there's something else I want to cover. An anonymous letter about me was submitted to the city, to the council members and to the city clerk. Nobody took time to call me and say, "Hey, we got this letter. What do you say about it?" Nobody took time to even research the city's own public record to see that it was full of lies, slander, defamation of character, and deceit. I was told that it was dropped off anonymously at the desk. No, then it came in the mail. We don't know where it came from. I got a good idea where it came from because only two people involved in city politics know anything about my deceased mother who they slandered. It'd be two people that worked at the bank with her at the time. One's the mayor, and the other one is this political puppeteer, Bill Aerosmith. When I find out who it is, and I can prove it, I have an attorney already waiting to take the city from making it public record and the writer of the letter to civil court. When I'm done, I hope to have everything, including the gold fillings in their mouth, the residence they live in, and the clothes on their back. I've written you a letter that explains everything that's in there. The difference between my letter and the letter from an anonymous, cowardly, chicken shit piece of poop, mine's provable by record. Nothing they printed about me is provable. Now to the public, I say, if you've got a problem with me, stand up and address it. Don't... Don't talk about my deceased mother. Don't talk about a child that died in my son's arms from a respiratory infection that wasn't treated properly. Although not my grandchild, I loved her just the same, and they couldn't even get the sex right. Don't talk about my granddaughter that ran away and make it seem like she's a drug addict, because she went to Leesburg to a family member's house, not to a crack house. Whoever it is, I assure you, I will find out. You have slandered and defamed four generations of my family, and they don't come here and talk about things going on in the city that are contemptible. I do. If anybody in this city has a problem with me, be man or woman enough to stand up and address it with me, not a coward to hide behind procedure and lost evidence. Read the letter that I gave to the Commissioners, the City Clerk, and the Police Chief. It's explanatory, and it's provable by public record. They quote public record in there, but obviously, nobody in this administration took time to do any research, because it was about me. Oh, look, we can make Dennis look like a homosexual, feuding pervert. Let's write this letter and drop it out there like a bunch of teenage morons. Trust me, when I find out, everybody will know, because the civil suit will follow. Not a worthless letter written by some overpaid attorney that's not worth toilet paper. You'll be served with the papers. I hope you all have a good year, and I hope we get better leadership in this city before it destroys itself.
Albert McKimmy.
Albert McKimmy, 3603 Golden Gem Road, Apokka. Good afternoon, Commissioners, good afternoon, Mayor. A number of residents come here every week, every meeting, in an attempt to foster relationships. In return, we expect to be treated with dignity and respect. That doesn't appear to be happening currently with this administration. In order to foster these relationships, it necessitates two-way communication. We do not believe our Commissioners should learn about impending events on social media, and neither do I expect to wake up on a morning to find a sign on my road advising me that the road will be closed and my ingress and egress will be limited in a matter of days. I have made representation to Commissioners from Orange County and Apokka for information as to when, why, and for how long. At this point, I haven't had any answers. The fact that the there was a pioneering agreement for Golden Gem Road tends to suggest that the developers were aware that there needed to be communication within the city, within Orange County, and with the public. However, when I appear at meetings, we still don't know if the city have accepted the offer that Orange County made for to take over Golden Gem Road for $2 million. We can't even get a truthful answer. It's disgusting that we don't know what's happening. Why is Golden Gem Road going to be closed? How long is it going to be closed for? I can't tell my guests who come to my my rescue rehabilitation, how long it's going to be closed or anything. It's a simple question. Are we going to be doing something to the road? Or is it, as I suspect, that we're going to be doing something on the hard shoulder? And if it's a hard shoulder, who's responsible for the hard shoulder? Pam says that we're not responsible currently for Golden Gem Road, but the developers did in the pioneering agreement, as far as I'm aware, make representation that they would be doing things to the hard shoulder. So if it's only the hard shoulder, why is the road being closed? Why is no one answering? Why can't I get a simple answer to a question? It deserves it deserves an answer. I come here for the last year, and I'm honest about how I feel about Golden Gem Road. It's never been ideal, but I do come here to try and help and affect change. All I would like is for our Commissioners and Orange County Commissioners to get together and decide what's going to happen. I'm sure there's developers here today who must think we're a joke if we can't negotiate with Orange County. Thank you.
Who's the last name?
Wicks.
Happy New Year, everyone. This is me, my wife. Good night. We've been married 45 years.
Happy New Year, everyone.
And we moved to Orlando in 2009. We've been we're business owners in Maryland. We had several businesses there that did very well. And I just retired, and we decided to open a business here. We found a lot right here on Park Avenue, small lot, like 1900, 1900 square feet, I believe.
1978.
1978. And our goal was to put a small house, maybe like 1,000 feet, 1,000 square feet in a food truck. And we called down to the zoning, and they told us, because of the size of the place, two plate, the house and the food truck wouldn't wouldn't be big enough to house that, but a food truck would be acceptable. So being in business, we know this, and Maryland is totally probably totally different than here. We did our due diligence. We came down, went to zoning and asked questions. Can we put a food truck up there? I believe it was four times, we would have said, yes, a food truck can be placed there. So after we got that information, we went on, put money down to have a brand-new truck built. Then we filed for, I believe, because business tax, business tax receipt. About three, four weeks went by, we didn't get no response about it. We called down to find out what's going on with the business tax receipt. They said it should be getting back to you anytime within a week.
Within an hour, we heard.
But after we called, we get a phone call, like an email, saying that we don't own the property, which the alarms went off. So we came down here, and when we got down here, the email, the person we spoke to said the email was a mistake. You do own the property, but you've been denied being able to put your food truck there, because the zoning won't allow it, although it's multi-zoning, commercial and residential. When we told them that we were told from zoning at least four times, three to four times, it was allowed, we could put the food truck there. We spent, I just retired, we spent thousands of dollars to have a food truck built, and now we're being told that we can't put it there. I'm hoping the committee will give us a variance, because I don't believe that was fair. If you go to the office zoning, they should have your answers. If you don't have an answer, just say, I'm not sure, or I don't know. Check with somebody else. But to come straight out and say, you can do it, and then after we spent our money, then told we can't do it, I don't think that's right. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
See, if you give us give us your contact information, does he have a phone number and email with us on there? Okay.
The thing he didn't say is that we are, we actually serve a church right here in First, right here in Apokka, so we've been here for a minute. And we did our due diligence. We did everything we need to do as far as getting the information before we invested in the in the in the trail. It's a beautiful trail. It's in honor of my mom. And so, you know, we we called ourselves doing our homework, and we spoke to the same gentleman four times.
Who was that?
We started with zoning, I'm sorry.
Who?
Hamas, Amer Hamas. That was the name in zoning. And he told us, I knew that unless we did something like a manufactured home, or maybe a small, like a barn, a barn dominium or something like that, it wouldn't probably be enough for both both things that we wanted to do. But he reassured us, and according to the multi-use food establishment can be placed on that property. So we did our due diligence as far as we could, we knew to do. So we spoke to that gentleman the first time in zoning, first place we went. And he gave us that information, yes, you could put the trailer trailer there. Then we spoke to him again right there at the city, right here. And he took us through the process of getting the permit. So he's walking us through the entire process. And then the third time that we met with him, he gave us the information on getting the business tax receipt. So now we're speaking with the same gentleman three times. The fourth time, when we called to see why, as Ron said, after three or four weeks not hearing from anybody, I know it doesn't take that long to get, you know, the approval on the receipt. I was spoke, I spoke with a young lady by name, Emily, and said, well, someone will probably be speaking, we'll get back in touch with you. You'll hear something this week before the week is out. That was on a Wednesday. That same day, within an hour, the call came in from Mr. Marius Ron, said, I know I'm reiterating what he said, but the call came in and said, we could not put our our business, our trailer on our property, our commercial property, because we did not own it, but that the city of Apokka owned it. I knew that wasn't, I knew that wasn't factual, called my title, our title company, who said something's definitely wrong with that. So we made a trip down here. And when we made the trip down here, by the time we got here, we were told, disregard that email. You're being denied because you cannot put a trailer, a food concession trailer there. All right, so what, so where we are right now, as Ron said, we took our retired money, and we went through the process of establishing that, because this was the way that we were going to use for our retirement. You know, we're we're not as young as he may look. The reality is that we put everything into it based upon what we were told. So by the time we got there, the fourth meeting, then we started meeting other people that are in zoning. So where this gentleman was handling everything before, now we're meeting with his supervisor for the first time, who basically said, well, you should have done your due diligence. And we said, we did what we knew to do, that was start here. And since we just found out it's just a couple of feet, one office from the next, right here, it seems like if he wasn't sure about that information, he could have just gone a couple of steps over and got that same information before we invested. But now, everything that we have, we've tied up into this. Everything that we've had, we've tied up into this. And so, as Ron said, my husband said, we are looking for the possibility of getting a variance, because we were given information for the wrong information four times, four times. At any given point, we could have been told, you know, this, you know, we made an error. But from the very first conversation at zoning, the communication, I heard somebody say one time that communication from one to another is like blood to the body, you can't do without it. So we called ourselves communicating and making sure we had the proper information. On four different occasions, we were told that we could put our food concession trailer there. And so the only thing that we had to go on is the fact that we were told wrong information, and we're trying to apply for variance, because we don't have anything else.
Can we can we get a meeting together? We'll get, I'll get the planning staff, and we'll get, we'll sit down, we'll kind of try to see if we can figure out a way to get, yeah. So, yeah, we got your information. We'd be happy to sit down with you.
Can we, you kept up to speed on that, because I had conversations with the week, we had, we had had some email exchanges last week on this topic. My apologies, I didn't get in from that until late last night. But I would like to understand, you know, from the from the very get-go, how did we get to where we're at right now? So that would be helpful.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh huh. Is it? Okay. All right. Moving on, consent agenda, we have 11 items. Does he might need to pull any, if not, look for a motion to approve?
Well, there was just, if if you pull them, it's not because I disagree with them.
No, it's fine.
Just to give an explanation for the public.
Sure.
And that would be number eight, award a contract for RFP 2024 recruiting for administrative position, just to give the public some information on what that is. And also to award a construction manager at risk for Fire Station 6, and award a contract for Camp Weewah Water Service Extension. And the only reason is because there's been so much conversation around, you know, certainly, when are we going to hire a CAO, which is, you know, because Chuck Merrick is our interim? And then, of course, Fire Station 6 is something that we are building, so it'd be good for the public to know where we're at with that. And the award for Camp Weewah, which we know that Camp Weewah always comes up, so it's good to let our public know what we're doing at Camp Weewah. So.
So anybody else need to pull any other items? If not, look for a motion to approve, there'd be eight consent agenda items, it's one through seven.
Right.
And 11, and we'll we'll bring into a public on the other eight, nine, and 10. So look for a motion to approve one through seven and 11.
Okay.
So we got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez. Second. Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, award a contract for RFP recruiting for administrative positions, Blanche, okay. Do you know who was on the on that committees?
On the committee?
Yeah, just just so Commissioner Velasquez knows, it's not on the staff report.
The city, it included Joseph Patton, Ratley Williams, Christopher Hanstan.
Hanstein from PD.
Apokka PD, Wanda Acuna, HR specialist, and Xandra. Walt Coon, HR specialist.
Okay. Commissioner Velasquez, questions?
So who did we, oh, so the RFP went out, we haven't selected anyone yet.
This is to award the selected vendor at this time.
Okay, so that vendor is?
Gov HR USA.
And so they will be responsible to go out, just kind of give me a background.
Like a headhunter, basically, to help recruit for the CAO position. Oh, he's here. I apologize, he's here.
So, here, why don't you introduce yourself? Thank you. And thank you, Blanche.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. My name's Jim Denine. I'm with Gov HR. Actually, I was in the public sector for 44 years before I retired and started working in 2019 for Gov HR. What we'll do is I'll answer any question you want about how the process works. In the case of a chief administrative officer who works for the council, our job is to interview, it's it's the process usually takes about 90 days. We're considered probably one of the best firms when it comes to a big net. We we can attract a lot of people that are interested, but attracting people isn't just it. It's, we take a lot of personal time to understand, and I'm the representative in Florida, there's two of us in Florida. There's 38 people like me across the country, but you have to have, like, most of the people like me have over 30 years of experience in government. And the the jobs that we're recruiting for, you know, of my 44 years, 23 of them were either city manager or county. I was county manager for 12 and a half years recently before I retired from Volusia County. I live, I live in New Smyon Beach. I really understand Florida law. I understand sunshine law on how this works. The key that we do, which I I take a lot of pride in, is we spend a lot of time, we we personally zoom each candidate that we're gonna, that we consider. We'll go through the resumes, my job is go through them. It's not uncommon to get over 100 resumes, go through them, narrow that down to a reasonable number to interview. I interview everybody personally. I will tell you that in most cases, it happened actually on the drive over here, we have such a big network. Our website gets hit, gets about 15,000 hits a month. We have about 9,500 people that we have a registered connection with across the country. These are all professional managers. We have 7,000 people that we get our media blast for jobs. We have 25,000 connections on LinkedIn, so we're really well-known. And in most cases, what you're looking for, in all the positions you hire, whether it's the chief operating officer, whether it's the public works director, whatever, most good communities in today's world are not looking for somebody that needs a job. You're looking for somebody that's the right fit that's looking for an opportunity. And in this field, it's very dangerous. I've been a manager for a long time. It's very dangerous to let people know you might be interested with your current employer. One of the advantages we have is that, in fact, it happened to me on a drive over here, a position we're recruiting for, we actually haven't started recruiting, but our network is so big, I had somebody call me that's really high quality, and they want to know what the job's about before they'll put in a resume, show their hand. And they want to know what the job's about before they'll put in a resume, show their hand. Really good people, it's dangerous to do that unless, and so what we do is we try to make sure that the candidate fits what the client's looking for. The key here is interviewing the stakeholders and have, having them be candid. And under Florida sunshine law, you have to do that one-on-one. Be candid about what you're really, really looking for. And our claim to fame is, you get people that have the great qualifications, maybe the education, the experience. But the big thing in today's world is, do they culturally fit? Does the chemistry work? Do they, do they communicate in the way that the commissioner council wants them to communicate? Do they get along with citizens? And then in addition, do they really have the technical expertise to do the things that are the challenge for that community? I think we're really, really good at that of trying to figure out. And what we usually end up with, especially in the case of uh, city manager, C E O, chief administrative officer, et cetera, we usually end up with three or four really high quality candidates that the council usually picks between. Um, in fact, I like the kid that if I'm really doing my job, that becomes the hardest thing of all, is picking between really good people. And good communities that are honest, that uh, are looking for quality people can find them. Uh, there are good candidates out there. But I will tell you, good candidates have choice. So they're picky. And so what we try to do is we try to make sure that we do it so it's objective, so that it's open to everybody. In fact, under Florida law, councils, commissions can hire just about whoever they want. And sometimes the best candidate is a interim person. But to find that out through the process makes the most sense because it validates that. You know, sometimes the, the person that you already have is interim is, is the best person. I've recruited people from, in Florida that came from Yakima, Washington, sometimes. And also you'd be surprised how many people that don't live in Florida came from Florida and want to come back. So you really look at who's the best candidate that fits your needs. Our job is to make sure that we make that difficult for you. So at the end, you have to really, really struggle with who you're going to pick. But, but in the end, you pick somebody that you really think is the right person for the job. Uh, we are very objective. Um, because of the experience myself and other people across the country, we work as a team. You'll see in our proposal, they, we mentioned other people that are on the team. Um, you're going to get an objective opinion, not only from what we believe the candidate, the client wants, but for people like me who did the job for twenty-some years on is that person really qualified for what you're looking for? We're going to try and find you the right people. Here's the other thing, under Florida law, what really is important is did you advertise enough and give everybody that wants an opportunity that's qualified to apply, an opportunity to apply and be heard, and be heard? Who you pick is your choice. Our job is to make sure that we get you there. But what's really important is making sure that you show that you really gave people an opportunity so that no one can say they were denied an opportunity to put their resume forward. We make that real.
Any other questions?
No, that was it.
Anybody else?
No, I just want to comment that I, I was, I attended their, the evaluation committee meeting on December twentieth. It was a public meeting. Um, I was the only one in attendance. But it was very educational to understand the process, thought process behind the committee. They kind of took a deeper dive in. Um, each group, they went one by one of why they voted the way they did and, and some pros and cons and things like that. And um, I, this one scored. If I'm not mistaken, you guys do have a lot of government selection experience in, in the government sector.
We've done since two thousand nine, twelve hundred appointments.
In the government?
In just, just, just government.
Got you. And I think that was what was valuable to, to the committee. So, um, and then I think your cost was in line as well. So I just wanted to state that that was a very educational meeting for me to understand why they were selecting or recommending your group.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, you're welcome. Thank you very much.
All right. Look for a motion to approve the RFP, RFP for the, what is it, uh, Recruiting for Administrative Position to Gov H R USA? What's that? Oh, got a public comment? Sure, come on down.
Albert McKimmy, three six oh three Golden Gem Road. It's just an observation that as we move forward towards uh, a review of the charter, if we were to move to a, a weak form of city government where we have a, a city manager, would there not already be a certain amount to overlap in the two positions? And if we do think there could be overlap in the, in the positions, should we not be considering uh, perhaps uh, the position of a, of a, a contracted person until we decide how the charter is going to move forward? Thank you.
Anybody else? You know, if not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve contract for recruiting for administrative positions to Gov H R USA. So move. Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, award a contract manager at risk, C M A R contract for Fire Station Number Six to Miller Construction Management Inc. Blanche?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Um, the item before you, as just mentioned, to award the C M A R contract uh, for Fire Station Six to Miller Construction Management Company. Uh, this is a continuing services contract. Um, I think they did construct Fire Station Number Five. And now we're here for Fire Station Number Six at a cost of four point three million dollars. The guaranteed maximum price is three point seven million with um, additional costs for permit fees, furnishings, and a contingency. And the chief is here if you have any additional questions.
Just a, just a brief explanation of what that means for the tax.
Blanche, you need to probably do the C M A R, or do you want to do it, chief?
Yeah.
He, he's.
Okay. Perfect.
Um, good afternoon, mayors, commissioners, members of the public. Uh, basically, again, uh, like Blanche was stating, uh, Miller Construction was hired as the C M A R uh, for Fire Station Five, uh, which we built back in two thousand sixteen and seventeen. Um, both Lunds, who did our design piece, and Miller Construction, who actually did the C M A R and construction, um, had a continual use agreement uh, for Station Six. So now bring us to, forward to present day that we're ready to move forward. We've uh, last year, I believe it was uh, June, uh, July of last year, we signed the um, agreement with Lunds to continue the design piece and also the pre-construction uh, contract with Miller to start the pre-construction process for Station Six. Um, bring us forward to present day, and now we're here. Um, we're ready to begin construction to come forward with a gross ma- uh, guaranteed maximum price. Basically, what a C M A R does, a construction manager at risk, now that they've set that price, they cannot go above it. Um, they're, they're held within that. They take, they assume the rest basically to make sure that we're within. We hope to come in under budget, of course, but you know, that's, that's the stuff we're working through in the contingency.
Any questions for the chief?
I have none. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and the, the only question just to, from our conversation was I had asked is, you know, we, we have some grant money in this that's paying for the station. Was there any timelines or specific requirements that we need to meet? And, and you, you, you guys had to echo that, no. We, we got the money, it's good. We just need to build it at, at this point effectively. And then we did talk about, if we can, I guess this, this would be the great time to do it, the temporary sta- Station Six, kind of what's the plan with that? Have we finalized anything from our conversation? Or is it still kind of up in the air from there?
It was still um, with the, with now with the construction of, of Station Six, if we, we're going to hopefully break out in the next week or two. Uh, that, that's the plan. I've actually had a conversation today with uh, Miller Construction. We're planning on doing that. Um, with that, it's going to take a year, um, up to a year to complete the permanent Station Six. On November thirtieth of this year, uh, we were contacted by Advent Health Apopka. They're moving forward with their plans and that they're ahead of schedule with uh, their build out of the, the hospitals, the fifth and sixth floors of the hospitals. With that, they are going to need where our current station, temporary Station Six is located, um, for parking. Um, that's kind of a, a phased-in approach they've been taking. Um, so we are looking to move the temporary station to a, again, semi-permanent location um, for the time being. We've looked at a couple of different things. And one of the things uh, we wanted to prioritize right away was response times. Um, you know, we don't want to move um, from our general location of Harmon Road. We've done all the studies to put our permanent station there. We want to make sure that we are moving forward and uh, making sure that we are keeping that, this, the same response times from that area. And also location, um, what's available out there? A lot of things are under construction, what we own, what we don't, and things of that nature. So we're looking at a couple of different options. Um, and we're working through those and we'll definitely keep everyone updated as much as we know.
And just to add to that, um, had a conversation with Parker Pridgen, who's the uh, I guess the C E O for Advent Apopka. And there's a, a, a third option, fourth option, whatever, that we might just part, we might um, pave all the way around the uh, the, the trailer where it is now. And if we, if it costs another twenty thousand dollars to come back when our station is open, to take the trailer off. And then if, so it's the extra cost for that small pad that we don't have, uh, won't be paved at the time of, well, when we move, that they, we would just pay the difference. So that's a, which I think is probably is going to be the cheapest way, cheapest route for us. So let's just say that the, the parking lot is, is a million four for their, all the, the areas that are going to be paved. And that one little section, uh, we have to come back and pave it later. Maybe it's another twenty thousand, forty thousand, not a very big footprint, as you know. So whatever that difference is, we could just pay that. That way, we've got the trailer, uh, we've, you know, we're committed to the trailer till the end of next, uh, well, end of this uh, October. So we've already got a commitment to the trailer. So we, that way, we would, we would save having either to move the trailer, which would cost in power and, and wastewater and all that. So I think, I think we'll end up, that might be our, our, um, our way forward is to just pay the differential between uh, paving it all, you know, immediately in April, whenever they need it, and waiting until we move the trailer off and, and just repave that small little footprint. So that's the, hopefully that's the goal. I'm, you know, we were having another conversation here in the next couple of weeks to try to, um, you know, finalize that as a, as an alternative.
Okay. If we can just take a tip on that.
Absolutely. As I said, there's, we have backups.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this one?
Albert McKimmy, three six oh three Golden Gem Road. Question is, what are the financial implications of the delay in building this uh, station? I believe that we had a grant of a million dollars from uh, the government. But that was some considerable time ago. If we had decided to build the station at the time when the grant was, was given, then building costs have apparently doubled since that time. Have, did we have any indication of what the fire station would have cost to build if it had been built when it was? So in terms of a loss to our financial reserves, have we suffered a loss to our financial reserves through delays? The reason I ask this is because we also need to build another fire station for Golden Gem Road. Are we intent in doing that in the near future? If we are, are the government grants for that? And if we're going to build something, should we be looking at so that we don't suffer financial penalties again through delay?
Anybody else from public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve, award a con- construction, construction manager at risk, C M A R contract for Fire Station Number Six to Miller Construction Management Inc. So move. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, uh, I T B two thousand twenty-three A eighty-nine Camp Weewah Portable Water Service Extension, Jumex, Juma?
Ju- Juma, Jumo, I guess, Jumo. Um, yes, good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Again, um, on the agenda item for the, this moment is the I T B for twenty twenty-three A eighty-nine Camp Weewah Portable Water Service Extension. This is a part of the Camp Weewah grant requirement. It's not funded by the grant, but it's a part of the requirement of the, of conversion of the water. And we did I F, I T B and the vendor that we're selected with the low bid is Jumo Inc. Any details on the project? Richard is here. And he can answer any questions you may have. We had four um, proposals and as listed on the agenda item, um, Jumo is lowest at four eighty-nine, seven, seven, two. And of course, we've added a ten percent contingency.
Okay, any questions for Blanche? Okay. Anybody from public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for a motion to award a contract for I T B two thousand twenty-three dash A dash eighty-nine.
Okay, so moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And I want to thank you for taking the time to do this. Thank you.
But just, just to answer a couple of those questions that came up, because I feel bad not saying anything as, as we're directly asked the question, right? On the, on the H R front, the, the people, there was a question about, you know, this headhunter finds a city administrator job and there's a potential charter change. Well, the, the contract is for a multi-year period. So, you know, if things change, dynamics change, and we still have to do executive searches for the city, I think it's really a retainer type of contract. On the second front, to your point, there was two, what, two point oh million dollar, two point oh eight million dollars that was allocated for the, the fire station. So yeah, this is going another two million dollars into the, into the coffers. And it's a correct statement. It's going to be, always be cheaper to, to make a capital expenditure and build it sooner rather than later because we're seeing this. But I just want, I didn't want to go and not address those.
Great. Any additional questions?
Thank, thank you. Okay, next up, business item B Climbing Major Development Plan. Jean Sanchez. Back from a worldwide vacation.
Good afternoon, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to approve the B Climbing Major Development Plan. The subject property is located on the northeast corner of St. Row four fourteen and Clerconer Road, approximately seven, seven acres in size. The major development plan proposes the development of thirty thousand square feet of area for a rock climbing facility on approximately seven acres. The proposed use requires a minimum of a hundred and eighty parking spaces, while the applicant is proposing a total of a hundred and forty-three. Staff has approved the proposed reduction in parking spaces based on the parking study submitted by the applicant, justifies the reduction as allowed by L D C section five point one point eight. At the planning commission meeting on, on February nine, twenty twenty-two, the planning commission granted a variance to allow maximum height of seventy-five feet in lieu of the thirty-five foot maximum height for their climbing facility. The proposed open space set aside is fifty-six percent, while seven point five percent is required. Picnic tables are scattered around the stormwater pond and is a passive uh, recreation area. The site is currently wooded and has a significant wetland area in much of the southeastern portion of the property that will remain undeveloped and buffered by the stormwater pond. The landscape plan proposes live oaks, magnolia, crepe myrtle trees within landscape parking islands and the rest of the project area as well. Live oak trees are specia- uh, specifically embellished, embellished the front edge along Clerconer Road and the northern boundary of the property. The D R C recommends approval at its meeting on December twelfth, twenty twenty-three. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the M T P. The recommended motion is to approve the B Climbing Major Development Plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean?
You've been working on this a long time, so I'm happy to see you here.
Very long time.
Thank you.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close, close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve B Climbing Major Development Plan. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, memorandum of understanding with unlimited capabilities. Bradley.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioner. Bradley Williams, Parks and Recreation Director. The Parks and Recreation Department seeks to enter a memorandum of understanding with the Unlimited Capabilities, a Florida not-for-profit organization, to accept a financial donation and to work together toward the design and development of the new inclusive playground at the Northwest Recreation Complex. Unlimited Capabilities' mission is to, quote, "provide members of our community with special needs or disabilities opportunities that foster independence and community, community connection by offering recreational activities, scholarships, and sponsorships," end quote. This mission aligns perfectly with the Inclusive Playground Project, as it will bring a new place base to the community for all to enjoy. Unlimited Capabilities has committed to donate $110,000 toward the Inclusive Playground Project, with $100,000 of that donation coming from their longtime funding partner, the Halliday Foundation, and the other $10,000 directly from Unlimited Capabilities. Chris Halliday from the Halliday Foundation initially reached out to the Parks and Recreation Department earlier in 2023 to express the foundation's interest in supporting the Inclusive Playground Project after seeing a Spectrum News report on the project. He connected staff, staff with Unlimited Capabilities, who they've, as I mentioned, worked with in the past on projects of the same type. The project is currently funded at $500,000 in the Parks and Recreation Department capital budget. The additional $110,000 donation will increase the total project budget to $610,000 and allow for an overall increase to the size and scope of the inclusive playground itself. This M O U is attached to review on the staff report. And I also have Ms. Teresa Whitaker here to, from Unlimited Capabilities, if there are any questions, and she does have a few words to say.
Hi. How are you all? Good to be here. Yeah. So I am the current president of Unlimited Capabilities. We were recently rebranded from the advisory board for the disabled. That may be what you're more familiar with. We were branded early last year. So we have partnered with Halliday Foundation several years. He's made sizable donations. Actually, I used to be a recreation manager with the City of Altamont Springs. And Halliday contributed to our programs greatly. I have then since left the city three years ago and became the president of the nonprofit and have continued to work with Halliday directly with donations. Is there any questions for me?
No. Just want to say thank you because this has been a park that many of our residents for the last, I would say, over five years have been asking us to provide for our community. So thank you for the donation, and I'm looking forward to the park being built.
Yes, ma'am. You're welcome.
Yeah. I, I serve as the board chair of Quest, and we have similar missions in the clients that we serve. So it's always great to see offerings afforded to those that need to have inclusive playgrounds. I, I don't know, and maybe this is more of a question for staff, is I'm assuming that you all would do a press release on something like this so that our community is fully aware of, of initiative like this.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll, we'll definitely get information out about this partnership and this project now that we'll be entering the next phase to do the full design and then hopefully have a ribbon cutting this year.
And then is it the intent? And I, I was reading the M O U, and again, maybe it's just I'm going over it. In terms of the best product possible, right? You know, we want to maximize what, what we can do with $610,000 because it's a lot of money. Is it more of a staff and your organization kind of saying, hey, what do we want to have here? Or is it going to be a community involvement in terms of advisory groups that have folks that would, that would need to utilize a facility like this?
Yeah. So we did.
That sounds bad. It's inclusive because it includes all able, able-bodied, special needs, what have you. But who's going to advise on what's going to be the best product possible?
So one of the reasons we did reach out to Unlimited Capabilities after speaking with the Halliday Foundation is they have done many projects in this realm locally. So, and with an outset on inclusivity and, and making sure we're designing features and functions that are going to be as open for everybody as possible. We did, if you remember back earlier in 2023, we did have a public, a little public outreach at the Northwest Complex. We do have that feedback still. And I imagine as we get a design kind of more formalized, we can bring some more people back in to take a look at it, put some additional feedback on it before we present you kind of our best plan, final product.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just to make, it's going to be in the area where the park is already existing.
Correct. The old play structure that's there will be removed and, and be replaced with all brand-new equipment.
Commissioner Smith?
I just want to say thanks for your partnership and your cooperation and working with us to make this possible. We appreciate it.
Mr. Nesta?
Quickly, I want to echo those same sentiments. Thank you for that. I highly appreciate what you guys are going to be bringing to the table, not only funds, but expertise. Mr. Williams, do you, we have a timeline on what this looks like to get, to get it up and in the ground.
We do have a piggyback in place for play structures, playground equipment, picnic tables, pavilions, those type of things. There are pavilions on site that will stay, remain part of the design. And then it just depends on construction timeline and, and develop, or actually constructing the play structures. Those typically anywhere from 24 weeks, maybe a little bit less, depending on, on what we end up deciding to go with.
Some moreish time?
The goal is to get this done in this fiscal year, as long as we don't hit any delays in our design process.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with unlimited capabilities. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're going to get a quick picture.
Okay.
All right. Next up, Apopka Station Street Project.
Good afternoon. Jim Hick, Community Development Director. This is basically the same item that was presented at the C R A, but of course, reading it all under the record is what we need to do. So this is, the, the request is for approval of a proposal for the Station Street Project from Standard Investment and Holdings LLC. A single proposal was submitted by Standard Investments and Holdings LLC, which is being presented to the, which was presented to the Apopka C R A at the previous meeting and of course today for the city council itself. This proposal has been reviewed and is consistent with the proposal request and property disposal requirements previously approved by the Apopka C R A and the Apopka City Council on October 18th, 2023. The request was advertised as approved by the C R A and the Apopka City Council requesting the following. This is the, it's the city and the Apopka Community Redevelopment Agency envision a multi-use project including affordable housing, downtown public parking, and an extension of the Apopka, downtown Apopka Trail and construction of a public event space. The city anticipates that approximately one acre of the property noticed for disposal here and may be retained for the city for construction of a public event space to be completed by the successful proposal. And this overall area is 3.43 acres. The proposal does outline a general design, which is, again, this is between Central Ave and Marvin Zander's, just north of the railroad track, and Station Street does bisect the property itself. The four, the 3.43 acres includes those portions of the Fifth Street and Station Street, which would be vacated as part of the project. The proposal includes a general outline for 60 units, two building apartment complexes, and associated parking and event space. The event space would remain wholly owned and operated by the City of Apopka. The proposal and the use of the site is consistent with the comprehensive plan, which does show the site is commercial, and the land development code for zoning is M U D, which is mixed-use downtown. Both land use and the zoning permit multifamily developments. And this project is also going to be developed to adhere to Senate Bill 102, which is the Live Local Act, to allow a maximum of 25 dwellings per acre for the apartment site. The apartment site is basically about a little over 2.4 acres, which would, at 25 dwellings per acre, allow for the 60 units. This is the original location for a, two 24-unit buildings. Those will be increased by stretching the buildings and refiguring this a little bit more to allow for 30 units per building. The major development plan, or, okay, what, excuse me, let me back up. Once the proposal exists, is accepted, the next step is to review and formally approve a development agreement, which would be, which is currently scheduled for the C R A and city council at separate meetings on, on January 17th, 2024. The C R A would be at six o'clock. We've got a couple more items to add to that agenda. And then C R, city council would be at seven o'clock P M. The major development plan or an M D, M D P would be required to be in accordance, this development would be in accordance with the land development code. And that does have to come to planning commission and city council later this year. The construction site plan, which is the C S P, is completed once the M D P is approved by council and planning commission and would be approved by the D R C, also in accordance with the land development code. The recommended motion is to approve the single proposal for Standard Investments and Holdings LLC for the Station Street Project and proceed with the review and processing of the development agreement to be presented and approved by both the C R A and the city council.
Any questions for Jim?
I do. Two quick ones. The, you had read something from our C R A meeting. That wasn't from this exact page. What, what were you reading from before? You had read like a description of how, I guess, the plaza is going to be paid for?
That's, that's in the development of proposal itself. I don't have it in the PowerPoint, but it's on.
Do you have the, our whole packet?
Yes.
Page?
Yes. It is on page 108 of the entire city council packet. It's under Phase One. I think.
So, okay. So this would, it says Phase One. Well, the verbiage I, I'm just realizing, we're just seeing now is the site plan in this proposal shows the minimum number of units proposed. Our proposal includes constructing the plaza to city specifications and having the city assist in the funding.
That's all part of, that's going to be brought out in the development agreement itself. Right now, the main thing that we're looking at is giving credits for the recreational component of the, of the project itself.
And that's how our assistance and funding will be conveyed?
Yes. Along with the property itself.
Well, yes.
Yes.
So, and I'll just go on to read it. "The affordability of the project must be maintained. Economic conditions have changed, and we propose that the city provide the land for the project while we construct the city plaza area with funding assistance to be, to be negotiated and determined and executed development agreements." So to confirm, these aren't dollars being exchanged, it's credits more so.
Correct.
Park credits.
Yes.
So I confirm that. Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions?
Good.
And again, where did, where did you read that? Like, I'm, 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 I feel like I'm dense today because I don't see that in my packet.
It's on page 107.
Okay.
Of your, of the full packet there?
Got it, got it, got it, got it.
With the picture.
We're saying like page 108 and all that sort of stuff.
Yeah. There's 436 pages in the packet.
Right. But on this particular attachment, we're talking.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think it's like the fourth page in or so on the proposal itself.
I opened it, I opened the whole thing and put it in GoodReader because I like that.
Oh.
So makes it easier.
I think that's how I did it too in GoodReader. Yeah.
Mr. Becker?
Yeah. I mean, I'll just, instead of like pretending like we didn't talk about this for 45 minutes already at one o'clock, I'll just reference for the record, just to listen to my concerns and comments from C R A board member Kyle Becker from our C R A board meeting around to that, to that end is if we're saying one thing, the developer's agreement should reflect what we're saying here. And that's, you know, primarily talking about the improvements, the public, the common improvements, i.e. the pavilion, lawn space, event plaza space. We're, we're being told that the proposal is for the developer to do those improvements as part of this process. And I'll still, again, for the sake of my concern is, I still have a concern over this being a full residential play versus having any sort of commercial element per R F P, but that, those comments are, what I've got.
Anybody else? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the proposal for the Apopka Station Street Project. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Ordinance number 3,032.
Okay. Ordinance number 3,032. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural to city mixed use for certain real property generally located on the southeast corner of Plymouth Sorrento Road and Dowman Drive, owned by S and P Properties LLC, comprising five acres more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Jean, any changes?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 3,032. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Minus.
Minus. Yep. Ordinance number 3,038.
Ordinance number 3,038. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from C C, Community Commercial District, and T, Transitional District, to P D, Plan Development District, for certain real property generally located west of Plymouth Sorrento Road, north of U S four forty-one, and east of State Road four twenty-nine, comprising 13.04 acres more or less, and owned by Gary T Charlton Living Trust, Peggy G Charlton Living Trust, half interest, and Gary D Charlton Living Trust, half interest, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, severability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
Any changes, Jean?
No changes.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion.
I just had a couple of questions for the applicant, just to confirm on, yes. So that's.
You need to come up then.
Yeah. It's Plymouth Sorrento Apartments, one.
Can y'all come up?
It's just the, it's the two.
You want the applicant?
Yes, please. Sorry. Just to confirm, these are just confirmations. And it's ones I brought up before, the, the four forty-one connection, second entrance. Still moving forward. There's no absolute denials one way or the other, or there's no approvals either way. We got a couple of processes we need to go through first. Second question is, the school concurrency letter is expired. We're working on getting that updated. And then what's the timeline to get that updated as well?
Commissioner Nesta, appreciate the questions. Jonathan Hules with the Lowes Law Firm, 215 North Yola Drive, Orlando, 32801. I'll answer him in order. The plan, as, as reflected on the P D conceptual plan, still provides for that direct signalized access at Orange Avenue and four forty-one. Just spoke with Ms. Richmond this, this afternoon as a check-in, and it is high on her priority list. Once we, you know, if this project is approved today to approach C F X and finalize that small land swap that we've discussed, it'll allow for that driveway connection. And then the second stage of that is to get the driveway permit from F D O T that would allow for the intersection improvements. And that will happen later in the process in which we're dealing more on the construction planning because they'll need to see all those technical specifications of what that driveway will look like. But all indicators and all, all discussions previously is that it's a go for that access point, which is why we're confident enough to put it on our plan and, and, you know, be able to, to come back and have a major development plan that would be consistent with what's on the P D plan today. In terms of the O C P S school capacity determination, that has been issued as of today. There's an updated one. It's been provided to staff. I can submit it into the record if needed. But that, it, it was simply a, an extension of the expiration of the original. So no changes on that capacity termination.
Thank you. Just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 3,038. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta? Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3,041.
Ordinance number 3,041. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, granting the petition of Double B Development LLC, establishing and naming the Golden Gem Community Development Direct District pursuant to Chapter 190 Florida statutes, describing the external boundaries, the functions, and the powers of the district. and the powers of the district, designating five persons to serve as the initial members of the District Board of Supervisors, providing a severability clause and providing for an effective date.
Bobby? No changes? Okay. Anybody from, any questions? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we look for motion to adopt ordinance number three thousand and forty-one. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand and forty-two.
Ordinance number three thousand forty-two. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the boundaries of the Kelly Park Community Development District, established pursuant to ordinance number twenty-nine twenty-four, providing a severability clause addressing conflicts and providing an effective date.
No changes? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter?
Yes, John Clorin, five ninety-three Uslar Road, Apopka. I'm noticing now you're finally getting it going, but for the city commissioners, it's rather, I guess, common for you, she's read, the secretary's reading the ordinances, which means you guys can see them there. Us in the audience have nothing. You've gone through three so far, and now you're finally getting up to getting it back up to speed. And I did send you all a letter, an email requesting that, you know, we have the right to see what you're receiving. So please give us that right. Thank you.
To confirm, this is all posted online, isn't it?
All the ordinance languages on the website.
Yeah, they're all posted online.
They're all posted.
They're posted online. So they're posted. Everyone has access.
All right, anybody else from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for motion to adopt ordinance number three thousand and forty-two.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Okay, Velazquez.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Is there a reason why there's silence? Oh. Is everyone here though?
No.
Oh, that's what it is. I didn't realize.
These are all second readings, so it's, we've already voted on it once, so it's not.
Okay, I keep putting five zero, but we're, we're down to four.
Next up, ordinance number three thousand thirty-three.
Ordinance number three thousand thirty-three. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from PD, Plan Development, to IL, Light Industrial, for certain real property generally located at one hundred Hermitsmith Road, owned by one hundred Hermitsmith Road LLC, comprising four point one five acres more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
June?
Good afternoon, this is June Song, Planner Two at the Community Development Department. The following item is rezoning application of the property located at one hundred Hermitsmith Road, and the applicant has requested change its zoning from PD, Plan Development, to IL, Light Industrial for the outdoor storage business. The total size of the property is four point fifteen acres. Its future land use is industrial, and its future land use of its surrounding areas are industrials as well. The current zoning is PD, and its surrounding zonings are PD, Light Industrial, Transitional, and Residential Single Family. DRC has recommended approval, and the Planning Commission has unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning of, rezoning from PD to IL. Recommended motion is accepting the first reading, reading of ordinance number three thousand three thirty-three, and hold it over for the second reading and adoption on January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The applicant and staff member are here to respond to any questions.
Any questions for June?
So it's going from Plan Development to?
Light Industrial.
Oh, Light Industry.
Yes.
Any other?
No, that was it. I'm sorry.
Any other questions? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for motion to approve ordinance number three thousand thirty-three at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Can you go ahead and, because every, I guess your, your, your students left, so can you just give us a little brief update on, you know, the students that you brought today? Just as, we didn't have a chance to do it, they were gone before.
So there were exchange students from South Korea, University in South Korea, here for, here at Orlando for their like global readership program. They were staying about two weeks and has approached me if they can have, like, have opportunity to like experience the US government system. So I thought like, since we have a like city council meeting this week, it would be ideal to see, like, let them experience the, like, how the US local government system is working on, and like, they might probably have had fun and like have thought that like how it is different from the South Korea and here. So I'm, I'm going to meet them at night, gonna visit them and like will ask their like thoughts and like, and let you guys know how they think about their experience today, yeah.
Well, thanks for putting that together. He called me, what, or emailed me, not even ten days ago, he goes, hey, I got a big group coming from South Korea, can you, can we, can we take them on? Well, it was, you know, we had the CRA, we had the, the employee recognition, and I said, ah, we'll, we'll just kind of play it by ear, but yeah, a great, great, you know, group of students, and it was great to, you know, to kind of give them the, how, how the City of Apopka works and then how we, how we operate within the, you know, within the state. So thank you for putting that together for us.
Yeah, thank you for making that happen. That was very cool.
So, Dr. June, I did get to speak to some of them. What was surprising was that they picked growing cities, and, and the City of Apopka made the list, because they went to Orlando, they sat at, and they, we were their second choice to come here, obviously with your help, but thank you.
The teachers are at the UF, like, they're PhD students, and I'm actually, like, one of the teacher was my friend, so like, he kind of contacted me, like.
So it's good to have friends in high places. Thank you, Dr. June.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, next up, ordinance number three thousand and thirty-four.
Ordinance number three thousand thirty-five. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from office to commercial, for certain real property located at seventeen hundred West Keene Road, owned by ML Carter Services, Inc., trustee of the Carter Keene Road Land Trust, comprising eighteen point eight acres more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. The applicant has submitted a small-scale future land use amendment requesting a change from office to commercial for property located at seventeen hundred West Keene Road. The site is approximately eighteen point eight acres in size. The applicant is requesting the future land use amendment to allow for the potential development of retail, medical office, and fast food restaurants on the parcel, which is not permitted under the current future land use or zoning designations. The Development Review Committee recommended approval. On the December twelfth Planning Commission meeting, they unanimously recommended approval. The recommended motion this afternoon is to accept first reading ordinance number thirty thirty-four, hold it over for second reading and adoption on January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Staff of the applicant are available for questions.
The only, the only thing I'm noticing now with the Planning Commission is we're just putting unanimously recommended, but we don't have the number. We, we always have like if it's a seven to zero or five zero. Did we ever post that before?
We unanimous, means it's.
Yeah.
Oh.
All of them? Okay.
If it's, if it's controversial, we have a, we would say five to two or.
Correct. That's what we've been doing, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for Bobby? Anybody from the public wish to speak? Come on down. Yes, yes, you, we're gonna put you in the spotlight.
My name is Phyllis Page. And I am interested in exactly what are they building or proposing to build in that area?
I think you've got a couple gentlemen that might, could help us.
I heard something about a medical building. What else?
He, he's coming down. Is that, is that it, Phyllis? Yeah, let the applicant, yeah.
Brian Potts, two four nine four Rose Spring Drive, Orlando. So it's a mixed-use center, we're building, we're putting in a bunch of buildings and parking, and we don't have end users yet, but we're requesting permission to put in medical office, retail, and restaurants with drive-through. But we don't have end users yet.
You don't have any users?
Not yet.
Restaurants?
Mm-hmm.
Is that fast food type, or do you know?
Fast food and/or sit-down, it just depends on the clients that come.
So medical, fast food, and what was the other?
Retail, and office, retail.
What's your projected timeline on this, you think?
We want to go as quick as possible. My client could be under construction in February, it would be. I don't think I can get him there, but.
I just wanted to know.
Yeah, we want to go as quick as possible.
Got it? Phyllis, you good? Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Anybody else want to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for motion to approve ordinance number three thousand thirty-four at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith. Second, second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand thirty-five.
Ordinance number three thousand thirty-five. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from O Office to CC, Community Commercial District, for certain real property located at seventeen hundred West Keene Road, owned by ML Carter Services, Inc., trustee of Carter Keene Road Land Trust, comprising eighteen point eight acres more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Thank you. For the record, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager, this is the companion rezoning ordinance, changing the zoning designation from office to community commercial. Development Review Committee recommended approval, Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval, and the recommended motion this afternoon is to accept first reading of ordinance number thirty thirty-five and hold it over for second reading and adoption on January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Bobby? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for motion to approve ordinance number three thousand thirty-five at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, let's see, ordinance number three thousand thirty-six.
Ordinance number three thousand thirty-six. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from in-progress to residential very low suburban, for certain real property located at twelve forty Uslar Road, owned by Mark Gilman and Camel Tip Norasing, comprising of five thousand sixty-eight acres more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Amir Hamza, Planner One. The applicant has submitted a small-scale future land use amendment from in-progress to residential very low suburban for property located on twelve forty Uslar Road, just south of Welch Road and east of Rock Springs Road. These are the vicinity and aerial maps of the twelve forty Uslar Road site. The total site area is rounded to five point zero seven acres and has a street frontage of one thirty-five feet. The applicant is requesting the future land use amendment to allow for a development of a proposed single-family residence with a detached garage on the parcel, of which the parcel has no current future land use and zoning designations. As mentioned before and shown on these maps, the future land use is in progress and proposed to change to residential very low suburban with a density of two units per acre, so two units an acre. Zoning is transitional, proposed to change to residential country estate. The specific proposed future land use and rezoning changes are due to the property being located inside the Wakava production area. The Development Review Committee has recommended approval at the December twelfth Planning Commission meeting. Planning Commission has recommended approval, and the recommended motion is to accept the first reading and hold it over to second reading and adoption on January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Any questions for the, for staff?
I just want to make sure it's five acres and not five thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, I know, it's a five point zero, but rounded, I, in my notes at five point zero.
Yeah. Question for maybe Richard, you know, because this is in, in the PFA, do we, is there, is there sewer, sewer line there, or what are we, that's my only concern is.
Yeah, because it sits on the.
There is sewer nearby. Since they haven't submitted an application yet, I haven't spent time looking at the distance and the criteria related to small, single-family lots yet, but I will as soon as they submit the application.
So they're, how far off of Welch?
It's about halfway between, it may be a little further north.
Quite a ways, okay, so.
Yes, sir.
Because I think all those are on septic, which, obviously, we need to, where we, you know, where we can, we'd like to go to sewer, but that might still be something we look at for the onsite system. But I just want to, you know, put that on your radar and the, and the public services team that.
Yes, sir, it was on my radar, and we talked about it at DRC as well.
Okay, okay, all right, super. Okay. Any other questions?
I just had a quick question for staff. Sorry, not for Richard, sorry. This is just to, because they want to build on this, it can't be a transitional zoning, we have to clean up their zoning, correct?
Correct, because they want to build a single-family home on the property, so that's why it has to be, have a zoning of RCE.
Understood.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for motion to approve ordinance number three thousand thirty-six at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second, but by the second, will we know it's septic or sewer? Will we know by then? Because that, that was something, I mean, the mayor asked, and I appreciate that he asked, because I was gonna ask.
Yes, ma'am, well, we, you know, honestly, I was waiting for your approval of this so that they can build more than one single-family home on the lot, and, and depending on how many single-family homes they want or their plat, it makes a difference with how large the lots are, whether or not they have to connect to the sewer or not.
Yeah, if they're over one acre, they don't have to, they don't have to go to sewer. They're under one acre, they have to go to sewer.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll know that?
Yeah.
By the second reading?
Yep. Well, no, that'll be.
That'll be when they subdivide, they'll plat the property, and then that'll show the lot sizes when they plat the property.
Okay.
Yeah.
When does that happen?
Sometime in the future, if they're choosing.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Sure, sure, you want to come down?
You're the applicant, Mr. Andrew Hamilton? Okay.
Hi, Andrew Hamilton, three seven hundred Grant Boulevard, Orlando, Florida. In response to the, a couple of the questions, there's not sewer directly adjacent to the lot, and then the plans is not to subdivide the lot either, which would affect what you'd be allowed to do.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, thanks for coming up, clarifying for us. Thank you. Okay. All right. Looking for motion then to...
I think I motioned, I think Commissioner Blask was seconded.
Okay, got, yeah, okay. Second with the question, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up.
Ordinance number 3,037. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T Transitional to RCE Residential Country Estate for certain real property located at 1240 Usler Road, owned by Mark Gilman and Camel Tip Norasing, comprising 5.68 acres, more or less, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
Amir Hamza, Planner One. So the applicant is requesting a rezoning from Transitional to Residential Country Estate for the same property located on 1240 Usler Road, south of Welch Road and east of Rock Springs Road. Applicant is requesting the rezoning to allow the development of a proposed single-family residence with detached garage on the parcel, of which parcel has no current zoning designations. As, as mentioned before, and again shown on these same maps, the future land use is in progress and proposed to change to residential very low suburban, and zoning is a transitional, proposed to change to residential country estate. And for the same reason, it's due to the property located inside the Wakava Protection Area. And Development Review Committee has recommended approval. At the December 12 Planning Commission meeting, Planning Commission has recommended approval, and the recommended motion is to accept first reading and hold it over for a second reading and adoption on January 17, 2024.
Any questions for Amir? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve ordinance number 3,037 at first reading and hold over, hold over for a second reading and adoption. It's got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Okay, second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3,030.
Ordinance number 3,030. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Apopka. Chapter Two Administration, creating therein Article Four, Division Three, surplus real property for the purpose of establishing guidelines for the disposal of surplus, surplus real property lying within the Apopka city limits, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
Drew Smith, City Attorney's Office. You have before you the second reading. I think at the first reading, Commissioner Nesta had some comments he made and some changes he wanted made to the ordinance. Those have been made. You have the revised version. I can go through each of them, or I can answer any questions you have.
No, we have the questions and the responses.
Any questions? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve Resolution Number 10. I'm sorry.
3030.
3030, yes.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Who was that, Nester and Smith?
Yes.
Next up, Resolution 2024 dash 01.
What?
It ends with an A.
Nesta, what did I say?
Nester.
Nester, did I say that? I'm sorry. Nester.
Thank you.
I didn't even realize I said that.
Commissioner Velazquez. The next time Commissioner Nesta says Commissioner Velazquez, I better be hearing you given a right.
Yes, correct it, correct, please.
I apologize. I didn't realize I said Nester.
It's a joke.
Okay.
Okay.
Resolution 2024 dash 01. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2024, providing for a budget amendment.
Thank you, thank you. As mentioned by Susan, the clerk, we are requesting amendment to the 2024 budget in the amount of $50,319,388, consisting of $48,368,888 pertaining to the carryforwards from FY '23. For POs that were issued and rolling over to the next year is $10,619,691 in projects that are continuing into the future years. The amount is $37,417,117. That's number one. The second item is pertaining to Fire Station Number Six that was mentioned earlier and approved by council. Again, we did need additional funding in the amount of about $2.3 million. We're requesting amendment coming out of the reserves as a temporary movement. We do, my next item is a reimbursement resolution that would allow us to reimburse ourselves in the future for those funds, once we secure the debt.
Any questions for Blanch?
No, I always get very particular about this piece of business that happens every year, right? Because it's, it's an accounting function. We're taking care of over monies and reallocating for this fiscal year.
Yeah, or upper budgetary, yes.
When people hear $50 million budget reappraisal, when we're in the midst of a fiscal year, people tend to get, they posture up to, to, to hear something like that. So I just want to make sure that everybody's clear that this is, it's a finance, accounting function. And then too, you know, to that end, and I know, you know, Mr. Vavrik, you had to address these, because in December, at some point, there was public posting about how there was like spending freezes and things like this going on within, with the city, to the point where even one of the local news reporters had reached out to me to ask about what the heck was going on. So I just want to clarify that this and that and all that isn't some big, we've, we've lost all monies in our coffers and we can't spend any money any longer. From what I understand from you is that there was more enforcement issues around purchase orders and getting the necessary quotes and signatures and... Correct, okay.
Any other questions for Blanch? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve Resolution 2024 dash 01.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Resolution 2024 dash 02.
Resolution 2024 dash 02. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, establishing its intent to reimburse certain capital expenditures incurred in connection with various capital improvement projects with proceeds of one or more future tax-exempt financings, providing certain other matters in connection therewith, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and for an effective date.
Blanch?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. In regards to Resolution Number 2024, the amounts that we are intending to secure debt for is $100 million for the Public Safety Building, $10 million for Public Works Project, the Fleet Building, Recreation Projects, about $28 million, and $15 million related to the Fire Station Projects. I do have Mark Galvin here with Hilltop Securities, our financial advisors, as well as our bond counsel, if you have any questions pertaining to these items. They can explain the IRS regulations and our future plans pertaining to how we plan to secure the debt for these items. Misty Taylor, our bond counsel.
Yeah, come on.
We welcome a presentation.
She sat here the whole time. Come on down, you gotta be able to say something.
Yeah.
Can't let an attorney come to City Council and not say something.
So for the record, Misty Taylor with Bryant Miller Olive, providing bond counsel services to the city. So we prepared the reimbursement resolution. This is a requirement of the Internal Revenue Code. It expresses your intent to perhaps issue debt in the future, but in order to reimburse yourself from that debt, you have to make this official intent declaration so that any portion of the bonds that are issued can be properly allocated to a reimbursement. And the, the reason for that, under the code, in case you all are interested about that, is that, you know, they don't want you to issue debt and then go back and look for capital expenditures, because once you've reimbursed yourself, those proceeds are deemed spent. And so you can then perhaps invest them in higher-yielding investments and things like that. So this just preserves your right to reimburse yourself. It doesn't mean you have to issue this debt or that you're capped at the amounts that are in the resolution.
Any questions for Ms. Taylor?
And this isn't specific to, we're not issuing debt right now, or more so, we're not taking on any bonds. So I would like to hear a lot more about that process, but I don't need to do that right now. But if we can, once we get closer or even start discussing that, I would love to hear the plan on that and take, get a little more details on that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? All right, no. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing and look for motion to approve Resolution 2024 dash 02.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. City Council reports. Commissioner Nesta, why don't you start us out?
Sure. Happy New Year to everyone. I appreciate staff working really hard to get this meeting going. It was a lot of stuff, so appreciate everyone getting back on it and, and getting us here. Thank you to the staff for the New Year's Eve party as well, over at Hurricanes. I think that was a lot of fun, very cool to have a ball drop. And I think it actually worked out, although it wasn't one party, I think it worked out to have two separate parties. We're a big city and to have two different options, I actually think, worked out for the better anyways. And I'm happy that we were able to do that. Lauren and I definitely had fun. We stopped at both and it was fun to see everyone there. Ms. Sherman, I'm sorry to get you back up. I have a quick, quick little dialogue for you. Appreciate it, thank you. At the last meeting, at the end of the last meeting, it was discussed that we were moving money in large amounts to, out of state, out of our banks that we've already partnered with. Is any of that true?
No, sir. We have not moved any funds.
Do we have any intent to move any of these funds out of these banks that you know of? That, that, has anybody discussed publicly or privately?
There has been no decision. We have not even brought the investment strategy before this council.
And nor could we move, is this true? We could not move more than $10 million out of any of these accounts now without public comment, public notice, all that?
That is correct. That is the policy that was adopted.
Okay, thank you. So with the dialogue that was going on last meeting, it seemed like there was a lot of misinformation, I'm going to use the word lies, that the Chamber of Commerce had received, as well as our banking partners. Do you know how that happened?
No, I do not know how that happened. I know that there was communication with them. They were aware and of what was going on in regards to adopting a new investment policy and the Investment Advisor, RFP.
Sure, okay. So that's, and I appreciate your time, thank you. Yeah, that, that's a big concern of mine that, that our banking partners were so upset with us when it wasn't true information that was actually happening. So I want to make sure that as a council, we, we all can commit that we are not going to spew lies in any capacity to our banking partners, especially as well as the Chamber of Commerce. As it was direct lies, that money was being moved to Colorado in some capacity, and then social media was going crazy that we moved money. And, and that's why I just kept saying how odd this was, that, that this is coming up, because I just spoke into many of our banking partners days before, and they didn't bring any of this up. So I want to make sure none of us are dispelling misinformation and, and not leading any of our partners astray in that, especially if it's for political gain. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Happy New Year.
That's good. Mr. Becker?
Short and sweet. A couple of things administrative, I guess, first off, the charter review, I'm assuming needs to be properly noticed, and on our website, it's not. So if there's a seven-day notice period or whatever that entails, we're approaching the hour by which we would need to meet that requirement. So I, I want to make sure that, that meeting is not...
I think it is noticed, right?
I have it up on my board.
Yeah, she has it.
It's not on our website.
Okay.
Okay. And then terms of who's going to be setting that agenda, I'm assuming we'll post an agenda. I'm looking over at council's desk over here, if you can speak on behalf of Mr. Shepherd, but...
I can't, because he, he's out today because his wife had COVID this morning.
No, no, okay.
But so I know absolutely nothing about charter review.
So can I give you a homework assignment? So if we can get a, an agenda so that the public and really us know exactly what we'll be discussing that first session, I know that he had intended the first session to be kind of lay of the land, the mechanics of going through the charter review process, et cetera. So if we can get that. I wish Pam wouldn't have left. I, I wish that staff during these day meetings would stay in here until the meeting's over so that we can ask some specific questions. One, we had a speed, speed hump survey or study done on Lake Avenue. I know that the police had cleared it in terms of it met all the criteria. And so what I wanted to do is just get commitment on potential funding and getting those installed. Because again, going back to the zero, the zero program, that, that's a, kind of a prime example or a quick win that we could have, because there is a high traffic of kids, students that are going to the high school and... Yeah.
Was it Lake or was it?
Lake Avenue, north of Groson Bar.
Yeah, no, I thought we, did we do that? I, I just saw that something came through about Caldwell. I didn't know. Okay.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, if...
Yeah.
Yeah. Economic development, I saw Dr. Patton had put the name around to the commissioners and with the resume attached. And it sounds like they're gonna, you're gonna bring her forward on the 17th meeting. So I did respond in affirmative. I would like to meet with her prior to that, that meeting, but thank you for that. And then to Mr. McKinney's point during a public comment, do we know if there is a plan to close Golden Gem at any point in the near future? And I guess... Excuse me?
It's closed today.
It's closed today?
It's closed now.
It's closed.
I don't.
So what, what sections of the road are closed?
There's signs linked up from... I would suggest it's where the, the new development stops. And they've taken all the, the signs that were put up, but two months ago, they had, they had 100 sites that were up in the heart. I presume this work has been done in the heart shore, but we never had any information that the road was going to be closed. I just saw two billboards up, electronic signs, saying that the road was going to be closed on the star. With no idea for why, or how long, or what's been done.
Oh, so I know Commissioner Moore's probably watching this. If it's county section of the road, I'll, I'll...
I didn't contact Commissioner Moore and ask, but she decided she wasn't going to respond.
I think Commissioner Adam, is it closer to the Kelly Park? I know they're doing some work on Kelly Park.
So it's, it's about 50% of the road that the sign appears to be closing. That's where they did all the signs that Orange County put up. And Orange County presumably from that down. And it appears to me that the only reason we could do that is it was work on the heart shore. And that would probably something to do with the Pioneer Agreement with the developers that are on there. I don't think it's anything to do with the city or Orange County. I think it's its values. But even though, you know, it doesn't seem to be transparent information between the commission and Orange County, and its residents are left wondering what's happening.
Yeah. So I know that people that are watching online can't hear what you're saying, because you're not the microphone. But just to recap, we'll run the ground of why and how long with our county counterparts. The, and then to the previous gentleman's comments that we received an email on about meeting content, again, the general public can go out to our website and pull down packets. I mean, we fought hard to have the entire packet available to the public. So absent that, the, the protocol within council chambers, I would leave to the chair in terms of what content that you're wanting to, to display for the, for the chamber. That's all I had.
Commissioner Velazquez?
I'm glad you started from the other end. First, I'd say thank you to Commissioner Nesta for clearing up some of the misinformation that, because I was contacted. In fact, when we went to the, I went to one, I think it was one of the events. First of all, we had a lot of time in December. I attended many city events during that time, but I was approached and kind of asked, did I approve 38 million going to Colorado? I was like, what? But I'm glad that you cleared that up and that our chief financial officer also cleared it up. So thank you for that. Again, Happy New Year to everyone. And Commissioner Becker, on the city charter, of course, to be noticed and to get an agenda. And I just want to kind of make, or make some reference to the Plaza New Year's festivities. It was very well put together. It was, it was a lot of fun. I did attend both. put together. It was, it was a lot of fun. I did attend both. I wasn't going to bring in the New Year out in the, in the plaza, but I ended up staying till like 1:00 in the morning. It was a lot of fun. It really was. It was very well attended. It was very festive. Got to see a lot of different families from our community come out. So I'm hoping that it grows. And, and actually, the, the New Year's Eve decorative ball by the engineers was amazing. It was very well attended. It was a very festive New Year's celebration. And just want to remind everybody, because I finally did get my application for the Martin Luther King, Dr. Martin Luther King Parade for next Monday. So is, did you get it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So every. Two Mondays, the 15th.
The 15th, right? Okay. So other than that, you know, welcome back, everyone. And I hope it's a good year for us, and that we can move forward, and that our public will see that we're really working hard for them. Thank you.
Just a couple little things. I sent you back about three weeks ago, a follow-up on Camp Weewah. We went out with our insurance carrier, their inspector, along with the fire department and our building officials, the facility maintenance, they walked the property. There were some minor things, life safety issues were taken care of, a couple plugs that were bad. There's a lot of cosmetic stuff that has to be worked on, and we continue to work on that. But all the life safety issues have been addressed, and they meet current code. We will continue to work on that. Radley is actually in the process. We're looking at replacing that deck. And we're looking at not necessarily putting a deck material there, but putting concrete material, so we don't have issues with gaps and so forth. So I just wanted to give you an update there, that safety issues have been addressed. The back portion of that property, as you read that report, it talks about some bunk beds and so forth. Those cabins aren't being used, so we're not going to invest the money in those cabins for equipment if they're not being used. Those areas that have been used, we've addressed all those. And, and things are in good working order for the most part. Like I said, there are cosmetics, and we'll continue to work through those. Secondly, I did notify y'all, our salary survey company, Gearing Group, will be onsite on the 10th. They will be meeting with all the directors. They're in the, I would say, close to the finalization. They're coming on staff to me with the directors to make sure they've got everything they need. To be transparent with y'all, I want to make sure y'all have the opportunity to sit down with them too, and to express any concerns or anything that you may have questions about. And I've heard back from all of y'all, and those dates are pretty much set. Just if y'all please attend and voice your opinions or concerns before we bring the final report to y'all. And our plan is sort of probably a February timeline, if it continues to move like it's been moving. We did do part of that salary surveys to update our job descriptions. We put, not we, but Joe did. He sent out to all the staff to get their input. We did have some respond, some didn't. Those that didn't, we'll continue with the current job descriptions as they are. But if people took on more duties or more responsibilities, we want to know about those. And we want to update those job descriptions. And they are being updated and brought into what currently is appropriate with our surrounding communities. And they will be making some recommendations for some minor changes in some of those. So I just wanted to give you a couple updates of where a couple of those projects stood and where we're at. With that, if y'all have any other questions for me, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
My only question not related to that is, where, where do we stand with the impasse on union negotiations?
Joe has a bid out to get a quote to do the actuarial study. I believe that's due in Friday, Joe?
Yeah, Friday. And then once we get those final numbers, then we can work on issuing a purchase order.
Just for the sake of reference, how long will that actuary study take?
I don't, I can't answer. Blanch, you know how much an actuarial study, how many weeks, so forth roughly?
I have not been involved in the union negotiations, so I don't know.
Yeah, they're just, I gotta do an actuary study, look at numbers, do you know?
I would, I would give them three weeks at least, at least. To get the, first, they got to get the data, whatever it's pertaining to. Then they got to do the analysis and then draft the report.
Just wanted to have a.
Joe, you got, that, that sound good? Three weeks, you think? Three, okay.
Just one more question, because I did get an email regarding public records requests. Some are claiming that they're not, they send an email requesting a public record, but they don't get a response.
If the record's available, Susan sends the record. I mean, if there's not a record that's not available, there's, the law doesn't stipulate that we have to produce a record that doesn't exist.
Okay.
But if the record's available, Susan does respond and provide the record.
And just, and you respond to even say that we don't have it, where it isn't available? Oh, you just acknowledge the email? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Okay. Attorney's report?
No report.
Okay, all right. Mayor's report, just, yeah, New Year's Eve ball drop. Just so everybody knows, Misty Taylor's son was on the, the team that put the ball together. So it was a collaborative effort between the engineering program and our facilities team. AJ and his, AJ Jewel was here till, they didn't get home till, what, 5:00 AM? Because they had, they had to have it, they had to have it down before Kiki's open at 7:00 AM. So it was a, it was a, it was a long night for those guys, had the team of four. And so we're going to do a nice little presentation at the next council meeting, just kind of go through that. But we also, the one other, one other group that had a, a New Year's Eve party was Steffi's Pub. They had one as well. And so I think, yeah, more the merrier. So anyway, great, great year, and hopefully we will.
So, so we're going to do this again next year?
I, I think we just need to, what are we going to add to it? We can't, can't, can't stay on stagnant. We got to add, add something to it. So yeah, absolutely. So with that.